This meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk.
Acting City Attorney Hakaluk.
Here.
Acting City Manager Doctor.
Here.
Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here.
And for the record, Commissioner Reed is excused this evening.
Would you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, the which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Our regular commission meetings were received through twelve twenty-four. Any corrections, addition? Minutes will stand as submitted. Board appointments. I'm recommending the following board appointments. Citizens Conservation Board. Appointment of Nathan Casturita to a first term on the Citizens Conservation Board. Term will expire on February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-seven. Metro Region Opioid Abatement Review Committee. Appointment of Jean Petrovich to the Metro Region Opioid Abatement Review Committee. This term is non-expiring. Commissioners? Do we have any public comments on this? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve the recommendation, um, an appointment of Nathan Casturita to the citizen, for a first term on the Citizen Conservation Board. Term will expire on February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-seven, and the appointment of James Petrovich to the Metro Region Opioid Abatement Review Committee. This term is non-expiring.
Second.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Bid award. Consider a bid award for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five ADA ramps improvements. Director Knopki, you have the floor.
Good morning, Mayor, or good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This is for our fiscal year twenty-five ADA ramps. This is our annual ADA ramp program that typically precedes a mill and overlay project. As we've done in years past, we've tried to stay a year ahead of the ramps. Because when, per federal reg requirements, anytime a roadway is altered, that means adding additional asphalt, the ADA ramps have to be brought to current standards. It can be done in conjunction with the mill and overlay, or it can be done prior, but it can't take place after. So our, we've tried to stay at least a year ahead of our mill and overlays so that we know that they're done going into the next season. In this case, there was two responses to our request for proposals. After they were scored and qualifications were reviewed, Rob Tabbert Construction, Inc. scored the highest. So it's for the, for that reason that we recommend to award the FY twenty-twenty-five ADA ramp program contract to contractor Rob Tabbert Construction, Inc. for the not to exceed amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Be happy to answer any questions.
Comments or questions from the commission? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. Um, thanks, Director. Do, when we, uh, when we go out to bid for the, um, grant that was just submitted to the state that we're prioritizing ADA grants, or ADA ramps, um, in that grant, will it, it won't, will it be grouped in at all with this project, or is that gonna be a totally separate piece?
Uh, Mayor and Commissioners, it'll most likely be a separate con, uh, agreement because of the timing between, um, taking the slipper grant to the Commerce and then getting those agreements in place between us and then, um, putting it out, there's gonna be a, a pretty good gap. But anticipate the same contractors proposing on it, um, so.
Okay, great. Um, just a comment, Mr. Mayor, I'm really excited that this year we are gonna be potentially doing over half a million dollars in, in ADA ramps across the community, so it's very exciting.
Do you have any public comments on this topic? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I would move to award the FY twenty-twenty-five ADA ramp program contract to the contractor Rod Tabbert Construction Incorporated for the not to exceed amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Second.
Second. It's been seconded and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. Consider a bid award for the twenty-twenty-four chip and seal project. Director Knopki?
Thank you again, Mayor and Commissioners. This is again for our annual maintenance project. This one is for the chip and seal project. Those chip seal projects, we rotate those through around the town to provide additional wearing course and, um, to our roadways to extend the life of those roadways. This year, we received only, uh, one proposal, and that was from Hell in the Sand and Gravel. In years past, um, we've done upwards, we're, we're falling right in between two thousand and nineteen, we had a, a big year, but that was, we had some extra money, so we're still, it really depends on the corridors that we pick and how wide they are on, on the square yardage, so, um, be happy to answer any questions, but for this ti, uh, in this time, we move or recommend that you approve the bid award for the twenty-twenty-four chip and seal project number, T S D number one twenty-four to the lowest responsible bidder, Hell in the Sand and Gravel, for the amount of six hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and three dollars and ten cents.
With Commissioners, questions? Do we have any public comments on this topic? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve a bid award for the twenty-twenty-four chip and seal project number T S D one-two-four to the lowest responsible bidder, Hell in the Sand and Gravel, for the amount of six hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and three dollars and ten cents.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion, final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. Commissioners, proposals from you.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. Um, regarding a matter originally heard as a, agenda item nine A at our regular commission meeting held on March eleventh, the representative of the applicant for the variance in question on that date spoke at our last administrative meeting held on March twentieth and asked if the commission would be willing to reconsider the item based on lack, based upon lack of notification to the applicant. And as you're all aware, there's provision in the bylaws to consider, to reconsider, and I guess I'm wondering, is there another member of the commission willing to second a motion to reconsider the item on the next earliest available agenda, and if so, I'm willing to make such a motion?
I'll, I'll reconsider.
Okay.
I'll reconsider.
Um, given that, I, I would make a motion to reconsider the item originally heard on March eleventh, twenty-twenty-four as regular item nine A titled, "Consideration of a Sidewalk Variance Request for Twin Creek Apartments, Lot Five A, Block Four of the Sleeping Giant Edition subdivision, and placed on the next available agenda at the call of the city manager."
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, would you like to take public, public comment?
Oh, okay. Do we have any public comments on this topic? I mean, the public has been quiet, very quiet, you know, so. Okay. No public comments. Madam Clerk, it's been moved and seconded.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. Report of the City Attorney?
Mayor, Commissioners, I have nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Report of the City Manager?
Mayor, Commissioners, just a shout out to our hometown Helena Carroll College team who is women's basketball team who is currently right now playing in the semifinals, um, led by Jamie Pickens from Helena, so just wanted to give a shout out. Go Saints. Thanks. That's all I have.
Thank you. I think, uh, Commissioner, uh, Shertliff wants to say something also, right? I see.
I would love to. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to give a shout out and congratulations to the national champion, Helena Big Horn's hockey team who won the Fraser Cup this weekend. Uh, go Horns.
Communications from Helena Citizens Council. Representative Eaton, you have the floor.
Okay, my name's Chase Eaton, um, with the H C C, and we are currently working towards our budget recommendation, and we have formed a committee to do so, led by our Treasurer, Lori Fitzgerald, and we are looking forward to our upcoming meeting this Wednesday with Police Chief Petty and Fire Chief Campbell presenting on the upcoming mill levy.
Are you done, sir?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Comments or questions for Representative Eaton?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, question for Representative Eaton. Um, how, how big is your committee to consider the budget?
I am not sure of that. I believe there's four or five individuals on it. Um, I th, I know Ben is in the audience. Maybe he has a more exact number.
Yes, he's here. He's gonna assist you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Logan, we usually have anywhere from five to ten. We're currently compiling the, uh, the committee right now, and once we have a, a list of when the departments will be making their, uh, budget recommendations to the commission, we'll have a better idea of how many we will have.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Representative Eaton?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Representative Eaton. Okay, regular items. Consider renewal of the West Side Fire Service Area Contract. Fire Chief Campbell, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Uh, for your consideration, tonight is a renewal of the Fire Service Area Contract for the West Side. Uh, this contract previously ran from two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and eighteen when it expired. Uh, due to good relations with the county, we continued providing service and they continued, uh, submitting fees, uh, paying their fees for that service, uh, with no formal contract in place, uh, but tonight we're recommending you consider, uh, renewing that contract. Uh, staff has reviewed it from city and county, finance, as well as, uh, the attorney's office, um, and I can answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Chief Campbell. Comments or questions from the commission? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Mr. Mayor, thanks. Thanks, Chief. Um, how do we determine what the fees are for this contract?
There's a resolution in your packet. Uh, we reviewed the contents of that resolution with finance directors from both the city and county. Uh, in that way, we were able to ascertain that the, the methodology was sufficiently sound.
Okay. So we just reconsider the methodology, methodology each time that we evaluate the contract? Is that?
I believe the resolution is durable beyond just the contract. Uh, the contract language itself is what has been tweaked, upgraded, and made clear.
Got it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the commission? Do we have any public comments on this topic? If not, thanks, Chief. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioners.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve, move approval to renew the West Side Fire Service Area Contract.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Consider personnel policies. Human Resources Director McMahon, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good evening.
Tonight I have in front of you several personnel policies for you to consider. Most of them clarify confusing or missing policy language. Um, they bring policies into state and federal employment law compliance, provide flexibility to meet departmental operations, and to comport with the H R modules of the new E R P system software. As you know, we are converting finance, human resources, planning, uh, modules to a new E R P system, and that really caused us pause to evaluate our timekeeping policies, our working hours policies, and then a couple others have come to our attention that need some clarification. So in front of you are several. I'll go through them, uh, briefly, just to bring to your attention the highlights of the revisions. Um, the first one, three, two of our policy handbook, um, is about sick leave, and that is to basically just clarify, um, the extent to which sick leave can be used for the death of a family member. Uh, the language prior was really unclear on what kind of leave people could use for the death of a family member. It used to say an employee may or is granted, um, sick leave, up to forty hours of sick leave to attend a funeral, um, where it's, it's more clearly stated that, uh, an employee must use his or her own accrual of their own sick leave to attend a funeral. So we wanted to clear that up. That was creas, creating, um, some confusion. So that's the sick leave policy. Um, section four, one, is all about hours of work and the personnel policies. That just basically got an overhaul, given that we wanted to clarify the language and then comport again with our new, uh, H R module. Um, we have a brand-new payroll and H R staffs, and so over the last several years, we've had an opportunity to answer a lot of questions and try to understand more clearly what these policies really mean, and also make it clear not only for us administering the policies, but for the employees who, you know, look at those policies and needs to be clear on what they mean. So, um, four, one, is about, um, scheduling hours. We just clarified, simplified some language, and then down under breaks, we clarified, um, the break provisions for employees. And then at the very bottom, the work week, uh, given our new H R module, we need to define our actual work week so that we know how to time-keep in the new system. So we just clarified that time for our work week is Sunday at midnight through Saturday at eleven fifty-nine. Hours worked, four, two, overtime and compensatory time. Great deal of the, the changes in this particular policy were to comport with the new timekeeping system. Um, we are very, we are right now very paper, manual-driven, so this really just brings us into more efficiencies with our new system, and again, clarifying language. For three, uh, the, um, holiday worked policy. Um, this was to clarify how people are paid when they work a holiday. There was confusion about how people were paid if they were required to work a holiday versus when they volunteered or asked to work a holiday, and that's very different depending on if you're an exempt employee or if you're a non-exempt employee. So we reorganized this particular policy so that it's very clear that exempt employees, whether it's required or voluntary, they basically are gonna swap a day if they work a holiday. Um, for non-exempt employees, again, if it's voluntary, that's the same provision, but if they are required to work a holiday, which has been the case, of course, when we have snow removal or a line break during a holiday and they have to come in, those pay provisions are different. So we wanted to be really clear and simplify the way this reads so that people understand how they're going to be compensated when they work a holiday. For four, time reporting, again, very heavy on comporting to the new H R module when we go live, uh, hopefully in July. Um, so again, this is just to clarify for when we, migrate to our new H R module. Uh, some of these policies, like this particular one in four, four, um, if you approve them tonight, um, they'll go into effect when we actually implement the nu, the, the new H R module. Uh, we wouldn't be able to make these effective immediately because we don't have the timekeeping system yet and those sorts of things, but this will t, um, serve as a guide as we continue to implement those provisions. Um, four, five, relationship of personnel policies to the Fair Labor Standards Act. This particular policy cleans up our current language of our policies to, uh, more closely reflect the Fair Labor Standards Act, especially with regard to how, um, exempt employees are viewed in terms of employment at the city. So it just very clearly, or very closely reflects, um, the Code of Federal Regulations of the Fair Labor Standards Act. And then, um, I think I... For six, exempt employee leave and pay deductions. This is a brand-new policy. We do not currently have this policy in our policy manual, um, in our personnel policies, and what the purpose of this particular policy is, it outlines the federal provisions for when pay deductions may be applied to exempt employees. You may deduct pay from an exempt employee only under very specific circumstances. So this reflects that particular federal law under the Fair Labor Standards Act. And then lastly, um, out of the hours worked provisions of section four, uh, this is a policy in our performance evaluation section of our, uh, manual, and this has to do with timing of performance evaluations. Um, right now, the, the policy is that employees are evaluated annually on their anniversary date. Uh, there are certain departments where they have different shifts at different times of the year. They might switch supervisors at different times of the year, so this provides a little more flexibility in being able to better, uh, accommodate operational needs and those departmental needs, so there's continuity with the shift and the, and the supervisor, for example. Um, employees will still need to have a six-month evaluation when they first start and a probationary evaluation, so they, you know, will have that pro, that one-year probationary evaluation and then transition to a departmental, um, need if that annual review does not work as well for them. Um, with that, I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Director McMahon. Comments from the commission? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. Mayor did have, um, one question. I'm glad that we are getting a lot of these updated, especially given some of the changes in M C A and updates to federal law. Um, I'm wondering more about, um, some of the policies that are discretionary to the city. Is there a mechanism by which we collect feedback from employees, um, regarding those policies that we do have more, um, flexibility in?
I would suggest, Mayor and Commissioners, we don't have a formal mechanism where we solicit that feedback, but when we do hear the feedback, for example, this sick leave provision with the death of a family member, we received that feedback and it was, we thought, you know, good and valid, so decided to update that pers, particular policy, so we do try to at least respond.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments from the commission? Do we have any public comments on this topic? Thank you, Director. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I'd move to approve the following personnel policies as proposed. Sick leave, scheduling hours work, overtime, compensatory time, holiday worked, time reporting and pay periods, relationship of personnel policies to the Fair Labor Standards Act, exempt employee leave and pay deductions, and performance evaluations.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Consider a resolution distributing railroad urban renewal district tax increment financing funds to Pattern House LLC for exterior accessibility and facade improvements. Senior Planner Ray, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Um, as you mentioned, uh, we've received another request for distribution of railroad tax increment financing dollars. Um, in early January, uh, Tony Prothero on behalf of Pattern House Holdings LLC asked that we move forward an application they'd previously provided to staff, um, requesting seventy-five thousand dollars for exterior improvements on the historic Pattern House. Uh, the Pattern House is located on Lyndale Avenue. It was originally built as the German Hotel all the way back in eighteen eighty-six, um, and as such, it wasn't constructed with things like ADA accessibility in mind. Um, so one of the things that they're looking to undertake is installation of a new ADA ramp in the front of the property, and then they're also going to be, um, making some improvements for safety by adding an emergency exit stairway and also replacing, um, the wood siding, um, on the upper level of the building and on the, uh, adjacent garage. Um, the total cost of all the work that they're looking to undertake is one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so their request is approx, is fifty percent of the overall project cost. This also builds on a lot of work that they've been doing over the past two and a half years of ownership on the interior, um, to create better leasable spaces for commercial businesses, and then also, um, they, they wanna do some of this work so that they can create more of a community hub for, um, community events, cultural events. Um, so with that, uh, I will say that the Railroad Tax Increment Financing Advisory Board reviewed the application on February fifteenth this year and unanimously recommended full funding approval. Um, and therefore, the motion before you tonight is to move to approve a resolution distributing railroad urban renewal district tax increment financing funds to Pattern House Holdings LLC for exterior accessibility and facade improvements. With that, if you have any questions, if me, I'm happy to answer them. Also, Tony Prothero is available online on behalf of Pattern House Holdings LLC. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the commission? Commissioner?
Sorry. Um, I hope no one else has a comment. Uh, thank you. Um, Ms. Ray, yeah, I noticed in the minutes it discussed, there was a question from staff about, um, if the applicant had been in, um, discussion at all with the Historic Preservation Officer, um, and they had indicated no during, um, the, the TIF meeting. Do you know if there's been any updates since then or if, um, any communication has happened?
Mayor and Commissioners, I do not have an answer to that, but it's possible that Mr. Prothero does.
Okay. We'll wait for him.
Mr. Who? Any other comments or questions from the commission? Do we have any public comments on this topic? I see, uh, we have a Tony. Yeah, you have the floor.
Hello, um, I am Tony Prothero. I, uh, represent, or I'm with one of the owners of, uh, Pattern House Holdings LLC, and, um, we are in the process of, um, trying to, um, get input from the Lewson Park County, uh, Historical Preservation Office. We haven't made a, a real, um, 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 we, we haven't ha, had an opportunity to actually have those conversations, but that is on our radar right now. Um, but anyhow, we are, we are, we want to keep, um, the, the look of the building, um, historically accurate as possible, and, and so our desire then would be to basically, um, um, just, um, um, uh, keep with the same look and feel of the building the way it is right now. Um, we don't want to do any, any wholesale, um, you know, facade changes, you know, something that would make the, the building look a lot different. Um, right now, the upper level is sided with patent board siding, um, and I think our plan is, is that we would like to kinda keep with that theme. I mean, that's the way it's been for the last thirty-five, forty years or so, at least that I've ever, um, you know, been around that building, and, um, you know, we, we, we're just not really interested in, in, in making, um, changes that would, that would, you know, that would change that significantly. Um, we're certainly interested in more of a, you know, if there's, if there are options available that are more maintenance-free that keep with the existing look of the building, um, you know, that, that would certainly be something that we would consider. Um, and, um, and certainly when we, when we are able to have a discussion with the Lewson Park County, uh, Historic Preservation Officer, we, we, we definitely are, are, are open to any suggestions if they have any, but again, our- But again, our, our goal is to kind of keep the building the way it is. We think it's beautiful. And I think, you know, that's, that's our goal.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just one comment. Really appreciate the response, Mr. Prothero. I do know that the former state architect is one of the members of the Lewis and Clark County Heritage Tourism Council, and I'm sure he would be very helpful on that board in the project.
Thank you.
Do you have any other public comments on this topic? Thank you, Mr. Prothero.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. I move to approve a resolution distributing railroad urban renewal district tax increment financing funds to the Pattern House Holdings LLC for exterior accessibility and facade improvements.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I just, I appreciate the work that's being done in the sixth ward, the reinvestment in that area and in that building. So thanks to the applicant, to the TIF board.
Any others? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertlith.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. Consider artist award for Lindale Tunnel mural. Director Sampson and/or Manager Johnston, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Tonight, I am bringing before you to request an award for an artist for the Lindale Tunnel mural. The Community Facilities Department published a call for artists to commission a painted mural on the walls and entrances to the tunnel under Lindale Avenue between Centennial Park and the Great Northern Town Center. Nineteen qualified submissions were received. The Helena Public Art Committee has recommended selection of submission number 18. Helena Queen of the Rockies by artist Wyatt Hershey of Santa Cruz, California, was presented at the March 6th Administrative Meeting. City staffs recommended selection of submission number 10, titled Wildfire by artist Elise Perfignano of Helena, Montana, was presented at the March 20th Administrative Meeting. Tonight, I ask you to consider awarding a contract to artist Elise Perfignano to paint the mural Wildfire on the Lindale Tunnel for $15,000. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Manager Johnston. Comments or questions from the commission? Do you have any public comments on this topic? I'll entertain, thank you, Manager Johnston. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to award a contract to artist Elise Perfignano to paint a mural on the Lindale Tunnel under Lindale Avenue for $15,000.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertlith.
Yes.
Commissioner Logan. Commissioner Logan. Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. Public hearings. Consider a variance to increase the maximum building height from 60 to 92 related to a cellular tower for property in a CLM zone district with the address of 1414 Orange Avenue. I guess it's Planner Holland, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Section 11-5-3A of City Code states that the City Commission has the sole authority to grant height variances for towers and that the commission shall follow the standards and criteria of the chapter for the Board of Adjustment when considering a variance for the height of a tower. Pursuant to 1155C of City Code, to approve a requested variance for a new building or portion thereof, the Board of Adjustment, or in this case, the City Commission acting as the board, shall consider the following standards and find as follows: that the variance will not create a significant risk to public health, safety, or welfare; the variance will not significantly reduce or impair the peaceful use of existing property or improvements in the vicinity; and that strict compliance with the provisions of this title would create unnecessary hardship or practical difficulty. In evaluating the standards above, the board may consider the following factors: special conditions and circumstances that are unique to the applicant's site; the height, location, or dimensions of existing structures located on the site or in the vicinity; whether there is a prevalence of nonconformities in the vicinity; the subsequent imposition of zoning restrictions creating nonconforming lots or parcels; whether a literal interpretation of the provisions of this title would deprive the property owners of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties similarly situated; the extent to which the hardship results of the applicant's actions; and whether granting the variance requested will confer an unreasonable special privilege to the subject property. Section 1155F of Code states the following: the board may impose conditions to minimize adverse impacts that the variance may have on the public health, safety, or general welfare. These conditions may include but are not limited to time periods in which it may be constructed or other conditions you deem required. Montana law states the Board of Adjustment has the authority to consider upon appeal in specific cases such variance from the terms of the ordinance as will not be contrary to the public interest, where owing to special conditions, literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance will result in unnecessary hardship, and so the spirit of the ordinance shall be observed and substantial justice done. That comes from Montana Code 762323. If you approve the variance, the Community Development Department recommends that you add the condition of a building permit be obtained within one year. Variance tonight is variance from section 1142, Table 2, CLM, to increase the maximum building height from 60 feet to 92 feet for a property in a CLM zoning district with legal description of Lot 2A, document number 3305614, located in the northeast quarter section, or northeast quarter of section 20, Township 10, North Range 3 West, PM Montana, Lewis and Clark County. As stated, this is to increase the height of an existing cell phone tower. Here, you can see the subject parcel highlighted in red. It is along the alley between Orange and Birch Streets to the west of Sanders. History of permitting action. In January of 2004, the initial building permits were granted for tower construction. In 2006, '11, and '14, there were permits for additional antennas or reworking of the antennas on there. The correspondence for the initial building permit indicated no variance was granted at the time. The code was different, and communication towers were exempted up to 75 feet in all zoning districts at the time of initial construction. That's why it's higher. An FAA approval letter was issued in last November for their review. Here is the site plan of the property showing the tower and its related structures. Here is the image showing how they're proposing on extending the tower. Here is the flat showing the legal area. This is looking north, standing on Orange Street. This is the tower as it is currently. And this is looking at it, looking towards the east over the vacant lot that is proposed for apartments in the Somerville flats. To the west on Orange Street is more CLM zoning. It's various contractors, repair, catering facility, places like that. East of Sanders, as stated, is the two new apartment complexes that are going in. North of the site on Birch is more CLM with some residential use mixed in. And to the south is also CLM, but it has greater residential use than to the north. This variance will serve the following purposes: to reuse existing infrastructure as much as possible. The applicant states that this will meet coverage and needs for the community and fill gaps in T-Mobile services. And they state that the new tower will meet all SEC and federal government health and safety standards. Building and Fire Department both commented that they will do their reviews when the building permit is applied for. Public Works and Transportation had no comment. As of today, two public comments have been received. One was a voicemail message left on my line that was primarily concerned about that this was to construct another apartment building in the neighborhood. And then there was one public comment that was forwarded to you that had concerns about the application. This is the language again for the variance. Are there any questions from the commission or the mayor at this time?
Thank you, Planner Holland. Comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, is the, are representatives from, I guess, from Mr. Holland, is, are representatives from the developer here tonight?
I was told Vinnie Rowe should be online.
Okay. I may have some questions that, before we wrap up. Well, so, so I guess the public comment that, okay, thanks. So I guess the public comment that we received today really questioned of the developer how, how the work would be accomplished. And I guess, I guess I'm curious about that. I'd like to hear a little bit about how they're going to address the concerns that were, were expressed by the adjacent property.
I do not know their specific plans.
Vinnie is on, so we can't, we can't talk to him.
I will say, I did speak with Transportation and Public Works about their policies for road closure, and they said if a crane needed to be run in the alleyway, it would be a standard road closure application and the public notice that that requires. So if that is a possible method, that is their approach there. If they do require access from adjacent properties, that would have to be addressed with the private property owners. But as you said, Mr. Rowe may have more specifics on their intention for construction.
Yes, I am on. Can you hear, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Okay, great. Yes, I believe as we go through the building permits in the middle, we can, we can coordinate how it would be that we would do that. There is possibility that if a crane may not be needed, they will only be adding an extension onto the top of the tower, which will be bolted on, and it's prepared for that already. They can already put that up there. It's not, it's not a significant extension. A crane would probably be easier, but if that's posing problems, then we could work around that.
Any other comments from the commission? Do you have any public comments on this topic?
Thank you, Ms. Ray. Quickly, I wonder, so I'm just, when I'm looking at the, the standards that we have to consider, one of them is the variance will not significantly reduce or impair the peaceful use of existing property or improvements in the vicinity and the zoning district in which the subject property is located. Staff believes that, that that is consistent. This variance would be consistent with that standard.
Yes, it's an existing tower. Granted, it is, as you can see in the pictures, it is a taller structure than everything that is around it. But it's not increasing the footprint. It's not a, while it is a visual impact, it's not a huge visual impact compared to, you know, a new structure or something like that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Public comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, Planner Holland.
Mayor, Commissioners, I have property next door.
Introduce yourself, sir.
Steve Davis, they have business next door to this property. I'm just wondering, when I first bought my property, I didn't realize about the electromagnetic frequency radiation from towers. I've had customers come in, ask me my concerns, didn't think much about it until I saw this going on. So they want to increase the height of the tower plus the power, and the power radiation is most closest and it radiates out. So the business is close by. And, you know, places that I have read, you know, you can see anything online, you can get both sides of the fence, but talks that residential structures shouldn't be close to towers like this. And the board just approved the apartment complex, you know, at 400 yards or a quarter of a mile is that distance. So, you know, has that been considered? The electromagnetic frequency radiation put off from this tower? And my next concern is the height of it and proximity to the airport. I know it meets the FAA, so does their air traffic control tower. But this is right in line with the runway. I stand out my lot and watch during fire season, the tankers fly over. You can see their faces, you know, if they have a hard time getting off of the ground, you know, that's one of the things, safety concerns, number two on your list. So that is a definite safety concern, extending that. I don't know why we need that tower extended in the middle of town. You'd think it up on the mountains gives them better range, so a couple of the concerns that I have.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other public comments on this topic?
Mayor, Commissioners, hello. I'm Pamela Lee. I own the Floral Cottage, which is right in the parking lot, right by the tower. My concern is really the construction of the tower. I've, over the last year and a half, it's been a nonstop, nonstop struggle for me to keep them from taking up my parking. They, and I've talked to American Tower, Powder River, Verizon, T-Mobile, they've all told me that to do their work, they're just going to use my parking lot, even though I've told them several times that's not going to happen. Along with the construction concerns and tying up the alley, there's four businesses that all use that alley for access to their businesses. Along with that is the health concerns as well. I bought an EMF reader just to test things out and see what, see what it shows. In the parking lot, they say like a safe EMF reading is like 1.0, something like that for MG, which is the radiation that comes from the radioactive stuff. In the parking lot, it's like a 3.8 or 6 point, going closer over to the Shedhorn Plumbing, it's like 6.8. So they have like the FAA's concern, safety letter is attached to it, but they didn't provide the FCC's health concerns on whether or not this tower, because it looks like in their application, it's going to a 5G, which it is not currently. By going higher, they're taking it to a 5G, which poses more health concerns than the standard tower that it currently is. Along those same lines, when they're doing the work up there, their tower is 40 feet from my building, the actual tower itself, not the property, the tower. So that's about this long. So while they're up there working on it, how are they going to ensure no damage to my side? It's, you know, safety concerns. Also, there's ravens, a pair of ravens that are nesting in the tower, and they've been coming back for three years that I've seen. They're currently laying eggs right now. They can't disturb the nest. I mean, it's a federal law, state law. While their eggs are present or the babies are present, they can't disturb the nest. Last summer, they kicked part of the nest out while the babies were in there. I had dead babies in my parking lot. I'd really not like to see that happen again. I didn't know that they were federally protected last time, or I would have called, but this time I do. So I'm hoping that steps are taken to, you know, protect the birds. So those are my. So those are my main concerns. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have any other public comments on this topic? Excuse me. That's not how we do it. If you have a public comment, you come up to the podium. Okay. Are there any other public comments on this topic? Okay. Thanks. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Wright, do you mind if I ask maybe Director Brink a question about what happens next?
Director Brink?
Or, well, or whoever from Community Development. Thanks. So Director Brink, I, can you maybe, I, some of the public comment does give me pause. And we've never had a variance like this come before us since I've been on the Commission. I guess first, I really don't understand or know much about the science. And then two, can you maybe describe, should this variance be approved, what next steps would happen to prevent any type of disturbance for neighboring properties?
Good evening, the Mayor, Commissioners, Commissioner Dean. To speak to what happens next, so if this variance or height variance is approved, then they can move on to the building permit stage. Relative to impact to adjacent properties, they would have to confine all their construction within their leased site that they leased from the property owner. Relative to damage to adjacent properties, that would essentially be a civil matter between the tower company or their contractor and the owner. And I do want to speak to the, to the radiation issue. And I just pulled up, just for reference, because I knew this, this comes up quite often when we talk about cell towers. Federal Telecommunications Act really limits local powers when it comes to communications and cell towers. We're allowed local authority only over zoning and land use relative to emissions and safety and wildlife. That is strictly in the purview of the FCC. And that's, that Telecommunications Act prohibits local governments from denying applications just based on health and safety. That's the purview of the FCC.
So I guess follow-up would be, we're limited to what we can deny on. For the public, is there opportunity for them to communicate with the federal government on concerns?
Yes, if, if any adjacent or impacted property owner has issues with the, the location of the tower, its height relative to, to safety regarding emissions and overall height and impact to adjacent properties, they communicate directly to the FCC.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, just so I'm clear, Director Brink, so we have no sway over any or can take no consideration over health impacts or anything like that?
Mayor and Commission, that is correct. For telecommunications facilities, that is correct. We have no say or cannot, we cannot make a decision based on those factors, only from a zoning and a land use standpoint.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
So, Mr. Mayor, I might just give a brief comment. I'm hesitant to make a motion because I don't necessarily feel like I have enough information to make a good decision or an informed decision. I, I wonder if it's possible for us to table this and then maybe come back with a presentation at an admin meeting about what the federal rules are in terms of what discretion we, we do and don't have. I really appreciate the answer from Director Brink, but I think having an opportunity to discuss that in, in another public meeting with that information in the packet and maybe more directly spelled out might be helpful. Given, I mean, this is the first time I think we've seen this in, well, since I guess 2014 or so. And so I think that would be helpful to me in feeling like I'm making an informed decision moving forward. I don't know how the rest of the Commission feels about that.
I heard Commissioner Brink, and I heard the public comments, they spoke about health and safety. And according to Commission, I mean, according to Director Brink, we have no authority in that. So I'm not for that. I want us to move forward and go ahead and do what we have to do, because we don't have the authority to deny that on health and safety. We do not have the authority, so.
Mr. Mayor, I just would like to echo Commissioner Dean's comments. I'm, I'm just in a position where I don't feel like, I don't feel comfortable with really any decision at this point. And I don't feel well-informed enough on this matter. So I'd, I'd be supportive of tabling motion.
Mr. Mayor, in that same vein as my fellow Commissioners, I feel that, I feel it would warrant a little bit more information, but also too, some answers or the opportunity to question the applicants, have more insight on this decision, I think would be helpful for me as well, and I'd be supportive of tabling.
Okay, I hear you. What are you all looking for? You got to give him directions. What is it you, when you say more information, what is it we're looking for?
Ms. Wright, I think just looking at the Acting City Attorney and Acting City Manager and maybe Community Development, Plan, Director, or Planner Holland and Director Brink, for me, I think it would be helpful if we could get a memo that outlines, I mean, these are all very valid concerns. And so at our next meeting, potentially a memo that outlines a description of what federal law is as it pertains to where we can and can't make decisions and what would qualify as, as somewhere that we, we have any, say, your impact. I guess I don't appreciate Director Brink's response, but I think having an opportunity to review what the federal law actually says and how it pertains to us would be helpful. Not just from the health and safety perspective, but also, I mean, I'm concerned if, you know, we have protected wildlife that, you know, may or may not have impact, I want to ensure that we're doing our due diligence.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
May I just offer that we'd be willing to provide something in conjunction with Director Brink and their staff and get it to the next admin meeting, even if it's a memo that could provide you information and time for you to ask questions? We'd be willing to do that.
Sure.
So, Mr. Wright, I will move to table a variance from Section 1142 to increase the maximum building height from 60 feet to 92 feet for a property in a CLM zoning district with legal description of Lot 2A of Doc. Number 3305614, located in the northeast quarter of Section 20, Township 10, North, Range 3, West, PM, Montana, Lewis and Clark County, at the call of the City Manager.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Shertliff?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion to table carries 3 to 1.
Is there anyone from the public wishes to address the Commission?
I'm back. My name's Radmonte, and you all remember me from last year. The issues I raised last year have far gone neglected. Nothing's been done. From the start of my endeavor last year, I was trying to bridge the gap, and I think you all know a little bit about that. To bridge the gap between the homeless and the people that have homes, from the red, the blue, and from my people to recovery. Now, I realize we made some progress with the winter shelter and possibly a hotel for people with vouchers. But the fact of the matter is, those are just more places my people will be booted from. Now, just after Christmas and New Year's, I ended up helping the city, the police and the city workers clean up a mess that was over there on the Triangle Park. And the determination that I got from everybody is that people are sick of it. The city workers are sick of it, the police are sick of it, the public's sick of it. To tell you the truth, I'm sick of it. It's disgusting, it's dirty. It doesn't have to be this way. I've asked for help, and I'm here to ask for help again. There's a housing problem, and everybody wants to put me into that. But I think everybody needs to be aware that recently, events have unfolded and there was enough fentanyl seized in one bus to kill every man, woman, and child in America. Now, that affects Montana too, and that affects Helenans. Now, from the start, I said we need to bridge the gap, and this is a community problem that is going to take a community solution. We all need to come together to do this. There's a lot of good people in this town that have trouble connecting with the problem or connecting with the people or connecting or getting a picture.
You want to wrap up?
I'm trying to hurry. I'm challenging the community, anybody that has anything to offer and help, I want to start a Bridging the Gap Coalition for Action Group. I want to start meeting next Tuesday, and we'll figure something out. I want everybody to come. I would welcome you and the Commission, the public, anybody that's on the internet watching this, anybody that's come to the city with plans, ideas, or anything that's been rejected, let's come together and let's get something going. I got some ideas, and I have some locations, and I've already talked to the Planning Department, and it's not an impossibility this time. I am confident that if this community comes together, we can get something done and get some of these people off the streets. And I'll help you do that, and I will get some reps from the homeless to stand up, buck up, and will help. We can all do this if we all work together. Next Tuesday, 6 o'clock at our place, please come. Everybody, anybody, help me get some people straight. We're going to be cleaning up messes around this town for a long time until we clean up the people. Help me clean up the people, please.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other person from the public wishes to address the Commission? Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Commissioners, any final? With nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.